I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to join me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, this day that we can be Americans and have the freedom of religion as well as the freedom to vote. Lord, I just ask that you have a special blessing on this meeting. This meeting thus begun in order and be conducted in peace. It's in your most holy name I most humbly pray. Amen.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everyone to the public business meeting of the Allegheny County Commissioners for Thursday, October 23rd, 2014. Gentlemen, is there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve the minutes from the October 9th, 2014, public business meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay. Moving right into item number one, gentlemen, this is Economic Development Week. Mr. Matt Diaz, our Director of Economic and Community Development is here. What say you, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For about the past five years, the Maryland Economic Development Administration, or as we know, MITA, has picked a week through the year to recognize economic development professionals and their contribution to the state of Maryland. This year is no different, and I can't remember the exact dates, I didn't bring it up with me, but I think it runs from this Sunday through...
Sunday through Thursday.
Yeah, Sunday through Thursday.
Yes, October 26th through the 31st.
Right. It's recognized as Economic Development Week statewide. Counties and municipalities across the state will be asking their elected political bodies to do proclamations to kick off that celebration. This year, we're lucky enough to have MITA hold their fall conference at the Rocky Gap Casino Resort here in Allegheny County, and that's the first event statewide that's going to occur to recognize Economic Development Week. So I'm here tonight to ask the Commissioners to proclaim next week Economic Development Week in Allegheny County and join the other 24 jurisdictions in the state in doing that.
Wonderful. Okay, we've got one right here. Would you join us up here, please?
Sure.
Getting more gray there, buddy.
Lot gray.
I'd like to give this proclamation to Colonel Sanders himself. Now, Allegheny County, Maryland, whereas the Allegheny County Department of Economic and Community Development is an active member of MITA, the Maryland Economic Development Association, a nonprofit organization celebrating its 53rd year, and whereas MITA provides economic development professional important educational opportunities and encourages partnership to enhance the efforts to bring jobs and investment in Maryland, and whereas MITA members promote Maryland's economic well-being and work to improve and enhance the state's business climate, and whereas the economic growth and stability of the state, all regions and Allegheny County, is an important component to Maryland's economic success. Now, therefore, we, as the Board of County Commissioners of Allegheny County, hereby proclaim October 26th through 31st, 2014, as Economic Development Week, and witness whereof we have herein to set our hands to be caused, the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland, to be affixed, this 23rd day of October in the year 2014. Signed by all three county commissioners. Congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, 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 hey. Hey, 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 hey.
Hey. That's my costume for the Rocky Horror Picture Show playing this...
You're not going to start with the opening act tonight, are you? All right. You're going to pitch?
I'm pitch hitting tonight.
Are you? All right. Gentlemen, item number two, resolution number 14-26, the enterprise zone changed to local standards. Mr. Matt Diaz pitching for our senior project manager, Mr. Tim Carney.
Yes, briefly, Commissioner, as you know, the Allegheny County participates in the state of Maryland's enterprise zone incentive program, and as part of that, the counties throughout the state have local standards in which they can basically tailor the incentives to companies that are best fit for that particular county or municipality. Our local standards do not allow warehouse and distribution currently as an acceptable use for that. We're asking you tonight to allow warehouse and distribution to become part of our local standards so that we can incentivize companies in the future that perform that operation.
Okay. Commissioners, this is just the introduction of the Code Home Rule Bill.
No, this is a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, the resolution.
Yeah, so you are passing it. This also has to be passed by the Maryland Council of Cumberland.
Does it?
They're participating in that.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, I'd like to entertain a motion that we pass, resolution 14-26, the enterprise zone changed to local standards. Is there a said motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dorsey. Commissioner Mr. Dorsey, our planning coordinator is going to talk about item number three, the introduction of Code Home Rule Bill 2-14, solar energy systems.
Good afternoon. There's been some interest expressed by at least a couple of different parties in locating wind farms in Allegheny County, and we thought it was in the best interest of the county residents to come up with some regulations to regulate the arrangement and location of these...
Solar.
Solar.
You misspoke. It's solar.
Solar. Gee.
Don't start that rumor.
Anyway, these regulations...
The October surprise of 2014.
They were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 1st after a public hearing and a comment period. I can briefly describe what we came up with in terms of these regulations. The systems are divided into two types. Accessory uses, which if you're attaching a solar panel to a residence or a business place, they're exempt from permitting. If they are ground mounted, there are some... it's basically treated like a shed where you have the same setbacks as a shed and there's a minimal sort of permit process. There is a 20-foot maximum height that was applied. We got these regulations by reading a whole lot of different counties' local government regulations. We did get a comment, someone thought 20 feet was arbitrary, but I was assured by the Maryland Energy Administration that that's a common sense sort of limit there. The other kind of solar energy systems are those that are a primary use, that are used to generate power to feed into the grid. And there's two kinds of those. Most people know about the photovoltaic, the ones that just absorb the sunlight and produce energy that you can either use in one of these farms or just to augment your electrical bill at your house, or actually lower your bill at the house. There's another kind, it's called thermal, and it's a little grislier. It's instead of absorbing these rays of the sun, they're put in a circle and they're like reflecting into a central tower, and it's, it looks like it's kind of industrial, and we limited the thermal zoning district. Otherwise, in just about any district where you have an existing building you want to attach it, it's a permitted use. There are some development standards we put in place for the primary systems, screening from roads, secure fencing required, underground interconnections, and some setback, special setbacks in the industrial zones. There was also a lot of conversation about decommissioning and reclamation of the ground, so that's pretty much all covered. We also had to make some adjustments by adding the definitions into the definition section of the county code.
Okay, David, this is simply the introduction tonight, and the hearing is set for when?
November 13th, I believe. And these regulations will be posted on the county's website tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Do we have to vote on accepting?
Yeah, we have to vote to introduce.
Okay, Commissioners, I would like to move that we accept Code Home Rule Bill 2-14, the solar energy system introduction. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dorsey. Commissioner Mr. Dorsey, our planning coordinator is going to talk about item number three, the introduction of Code Home Rule Bill 2-14, solar energy systems.
Good afternoon. There's been some interest expressed by at least a couple of different parties in locating wind farms in Allegheny County, and we thought it was in the best interest of the county residents to come up with some regulations to regulate the arrangement and location of these...
Solar.
Solar.
You misspoke. It's solar.
Solar. Gee.
Don't start that rumor.
Anyway, these regulations...
The October surprise of 2014.
They were approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 1st after a public hearing and a comment period. I can briefly describe what we came up with in terms of these regulations. The systems are divided into two types. Accessory uses, which if you're attaching a solar panel to a residence or a business place, they're exempt from permitting. If they are ground mounted, there are some... it's basically treated like a shed where you have the same setbacks as a shed and there's a minimal sort of permit process. There is a 20-foot maximum height that was applied. We got these regulations by reading a whole lot of different counties' local government regulations. We did get a comment, someone thought 20 feet was arbitrary, but I was assured by the Maryland Energy Administration that that's a common sense sort of limit there. The other kind of solar energy systems are those that are a primary use, that are used to generate power to feed into the grid. And there's two kinds of those. Most people know about the photovoltaic, the ones that just absorb the sunlight and produce energy that you can either use in one of these farms or just to augment your electrical bill at your house, or actually lower your bill at the house. There's another kind, it's called thermal, and it's a little grislier. Instead of absorbing these rays of the sun, they're put in a circle and they're like reflecting into a central tower, and it's, it looks like it's kind of industrial, and we limited the thermal zoning district. Otherwise, in just about any district where you have an existing building you want to attach it, it's a permitted use. There are some development standards we put in place for the primary systems, screening from roads, secure fencing required, underground interconnections, and some setback, special setbacks in the industrial zones. There was also a lot of conversation about decommissioning and reclamation of the ground, so that's pretty much all covered. We also had to make some adjustments by adding the definitions into the definition section of the county code.
Okay, David, this is simply the introduction tonight, and the hearing is set for when?
November 13th, I believe. And these regulations will be posted on the county's website tomorrow.
Okay, perfect. Do we have to vote on accepting?
Yeah, we have to vote to introduce.
Okay, Commissioners, I would like to move that we accept Code Home Rule Bill 2-14, the solar energy system introduction. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Dorsey, item number four, rural legacy easement purchase, please.
A property owner of 43 acres in the Mountain Ridge Rural Legacy Area has applied for an easement wherein he sells his development rights to the Department of Natural Resources, which in turn, those are held as an easement by the county. Gentlemen, it's been approved by the Board of Public Works for this, and what I'm doing is seeking approval for a sales agreement with the owner of this property. The sale amounts to about $86,000. As these things go, it's a sort of a smaller property, and they come up with the value of a per acre value, so it's a kind of a smaller project than others we've had. This property is located in the watershed of Gilmore Reservoir, and there are some spring-fed streams that run through the property into the reservoir. One of the goals of a study that was done on behalf of the Low and Conning Water System, what they wanted to do is limit development in these watersheds, and that's also something that's reflected in zoning law, too. So we would be accomplishing that maybe even a little better than what the zoning would do by approving this easement.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, I'd like to make the motion that we accept this rural legacy easement purchase. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner McKay, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. We're going to have a roll call vote here. Commissioner Valentine?
Aye.
Commissioner Brody?
Nay.
Commissioner McKay? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda this evening?
Commissioners, this evening, our consent agenda consists of items five through nine. Item five consists of a motion for reappointments to the county's Mental Health Advisory Board. Item six is a budget amendment for FY 2014, the amount of $17,455 for the Board of Education. This is to help them take off one of the items that they have to satisfy to have their audit submitted to the state of Maryland. Item seven is an architectural and engineering bid award for Phase One of the South Cumberland Library renovation project to Murphy &amp; Dittenhafer in the amount of $123,000. State of Maryland is providing a grant to cover 90% of the cost of the study and the design, and the county is obligated to provide 10% of the cost. These funds were approved as part of the county's CIP earlier this year. Item eight is a motion to authorize the acquisition of a new Kubota mower and two new snow blowers for alternative sentencing, and authorizing the trade-in of some older equipment the county has in its possession to acquire that equipment. Number nine is a motion to authorize a bid for 15 HART monitors for EMS organizations in the county.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Everly concerning our consent agenda?
None.
Okay. Hey, so if I want to try out this mower and try out this 18-inch... not the HART monitor, now the mower.
Oh, they'll probably need the HART monitor when he gets off the mower.
And then, and then the snow blower.
Oh, did you hear? Bill said the mower will need the HART monitor.
So if I want to try these out, I don't have to get like in an orange jumpsuit to do that, do I?
No, sir. They're changing them to lime green.
Lime green.
Mike, it's Halloween, you don't want to be in an orange jumpsuit. You'll be the biggest jack-o'-lantern out there, sir.
Waiting for a motion, sir.
Oh, okay. So moved. Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We should not be allowed to have this much fun. Mr. Everly, what do you have on your desk?
Commissioners, two things. First and foremost, I think it's important that we take an opportunity to point out to the press especially, there is a public notice in your packet recognizing Matthew Diaz, who's been recertified for his credentials through the International Association, and Matt's been very, very active of the I E C D. Is that correct, Matthew? You are a I E D C, I'm sorry, and the International Economic Development Council. You are one of the training officers, if I'm not mistaken. You spend some time grading papers from time and again for those folks that are pursuing their professional accreditation, and I think that's definitely noteworthy.
Is that what they mean when they keep saying Matt's certifiable?
Matt's certified, that's right.
Is that all?
What's that?
Anything else?
Now, I got one more thing. If you'll just indulge me for a few moments here, I'm going to have to tag this one with Commissioner Valentine, if you don't mind.
Well, you know I do have letters behind my name.
Yeah, oh, boy. This'll be good.
A A G G. All-around good guy. See? See, those are the letters behind...
Wonderful. I didn't see that on your business card, though.
Look...
You're going to have to work on that.
Yeah.
There should be enough room on the business card to put that.
Well, you know, if you and I are going to go on the show and be this Laurel and Hardy team, you know, we're going to have to work on your...
I'm moving the bag lower, farther down that way.
We're going to have to worry on it. Okay, anyhow, go ahead.
All right, Commissioners.
More important stuff.
If you could just give me a moment here, I want to give the Commissioners and the community a heads up about something that has been rumored on the street now for the past couple of weeks, and in all likelihood here...
No, we're not pregnant.
At your next public meeting in November, we're likely to see a formal agreement, and it all relates to dirt track racing at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds. As the Commissioners are aware, since 2003, the county has had a formal agreement with Oval Track Promotions, Rick Jones, the president of that organization, to promote dirt track racing at the fairgrounds. But unfortunately, in recent years, dirt track racing has... the interest has elapsed. Just last year alone, there was only one race. This year, there were no races scheduled. The current agreement with Oval Track Promotions expires at the end of this calendar year. There was an option period that OTP could have exercised, but they chose not to do that. So in the last couple of months, we've had some discussions with a local businessman who is interested in grabbing the torch and moving it ahead, but doing something different than we've seen in the past. Oval Track Promotions would, in some years, would have as many as 20 to 25 racing events. What we're talking about now is a limited number of racing activities there at the fairgrounds. Something to probably maybe no more than six or seven. But Commissioner Valentine introduced me to this gentleman and his idea not long ago, and I'm going to let you release the informations.
Yes, Craig Nippenberg, who has Nationwide Insurance locally, has stepped up. He wants to promote the races at Cumberland Speedway, and if anybody knows anything about NASCAR, Nationwide is very big into racing. Craig has been able to secure numerous corporate sponsors to help fund this racing activity, and probably the most interesting idea he has, he will be forming a nonprofit, and all proceeds from the racing at the new Cumberland Speedway will be given to nonprofit organizations throughout the county. One of those that he's already been in touch with is Toys for Happiness. So we use stock car racing at Cumberland to help needy kids have a night for Christmas. The county has a source of new clay. The surface out, the Speedway definitely needs to be replaced. The county will be replacing that surface. I've been in touch with the promoter of Bedford Speedway, a gentleman that I raced with personally for a number of years. He's very interested in forming a loose partnership with the Cumberland Speedway, so both speedways would run the same exact rules, they would have the same exact payoffs, so the cars would have two nights a week where they could race and race under the same rules. It would also give an opportunity to possibly have one large event where the cars would have to run Bedford Speedway on Friday night, then they would have to compete at Cumberland Speedway on Saturday night. You take the combined finishes, come up with the overall finishing for the two races. This will bring quite a bit of economic development with that. Whenever you're talking about automobile races, it's a lot of income for local machine shops, a lot of sales for tire outlets, and those tires, believe me, I raced for many years. You can go through $400 or $500 worth of tires in one night's racing. So there'll be a lot of tire sales, fuel sales, the higher dollar classes, you don't go to Sheetz and get your gas. You have to special racing fuel that will be sold locally. Of course, your restaurants will see a lot of business, will be drawing crowds from Winchester, Hagerstown, Bedford, other areas of Pennsylvania. It's all local vendors at the fairgrounds, so they'll see an increase in business. So I think overall, this is just another great event to add for our fairgrounds. Our fairgrounds is a real jewel, and it produces a lot of income for the county, brings a lot of people into the area, and this is just a way... there was a time when Mario Andretti won a race at the Cumberland Fairgrounds, Richard Petty raced there, so it's got a long history, and we hope that Mr. Nippenberg is able to bring it back to what it was a few years ago.
Wonderful.
One more piece of information. The draft agreement that we're working on at this point in time has the end time at 11 o'clock PM. The last Saturday night race that we had under the old agreement could go up until 12 o'clock, but recognizing that there is a neighborhood close by, they decided to shorten the racing time by at least one hour.
And the cars will be required to run a racing muffler, too, it'll keep the noise level down quite a bit.
Okay. Mr. Rudd, can you top that?
No.
Okay, well, then, then you have nothing.
And he stole my line about Matt being certified, so...
Okay, Commissioners. Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, just a couple of things. If anyone's been up to Laveo lately, they've noticed that the new Autozone is underway. Very good, and welcome them. And also, I do believe that the permit process has started for the Winchester court job. They applied for a demolition permit, so it looks like that one is well underway, too, also. And also, to clarify my statements on the... I'm going to say this right now, tonight, for the rural legacy, for the land use development rights. The reason I vote against them, and will always as long as I'm sitting here, is because the state has enough control of Allegheny County, because any time that they get these, it's cheaper than buying the ground, and what they do is they lock it up forever. And right now, I see a mad scramble for the state to buy up as much rights as they can in Allegheny County, because both governors, the governor's candidates, has both said within two years, Maryland is going to enter into the drilling field, because the state has no revenue sources, because it's broke. So right now, what they're trying to do is take as much ground off the table as they can. So that is the reason I vote the way I do, sir, because I've noticed the last couple has really been focused in the Mount Savage, Georgia's Creek area, which is where our resources lie. So, that's it.
Perfect. Okay. Commissioner Valentine?
I'll just add one more item. I've got a meeting scheduled for this coming Tuesday at 1:00 with some gentlemen. One gentleman's from here in Cumberland, established business here about a year and a half ago. The rest of the group are all from the Frederick area. They would like to create a fundraiser that would be held, once again, at the Cumberland Fairgrounds. This is to raise money for returning veterans. Loosely, their group's called Veterans 22, based on the fact that there's been 22 veterans that have returned recently in the state of Maryland who have committed suicide. And they hope to raise funds to help these people out. Loosely, the plans would be there'd be a motorcycle ride from all parts of the state of Maryland. They would arrive at the Cumberland Fairgrounds, that would be their staging area, they would camp there at night, probably a music concert that night to help raise funds. So we're meeting Tuesday to try to put this together, and I think it says a lot about our fairgrounds. These people are from Frederick, they looked at the Frederick Fairgrounds, they looked at the Montgomery County Fairgrounds, and they said Cumberland Fairgrounds is where we want to be. So we'll have to make sure that there is an open date where we arrange something like this and start putting it together, but it's a way to help our veterans, and once again, utilize in our fairgrounds the way it should be.
Okay. I will not make this mistake twice. I see that Commissioner Jim Railey is in the audience this evening from the county of Garrett. He's the commissioner up there, so good to see you, sir. Thank you for being here. And again, I apologize the other night. It was actually written down. So you're just... you're used to me just messing up. Is that what you say? It's par for the course.
The history at the Cumberland Airport in sports car racing, and the people who raced here during that period of time, is unbelievable, and it's something that we should really build on. It's comparable to the canal, or the Potomac River, or other things in our area. The Cumberland Airport produced one of the highest level of airport racing in the country, with the Sports Car of America national championship races held from 1953 to 1971. I have a copy of a program from the 1961 race over here, and if you look at the names in there, and you think of it from an economic development standpoint, because the name Colgate is in here, the name of Duncan Black is in here, who his family owned a machine shop that is now called Black &amp; Decker. These were people who came to Cumberland to have fun. Right now, with our autocross, we have people who are business owners, and we have people who are executives of large corporations who come and autocross. When we talk about economic development, all we need to do is have people over there talking to them. Who knew back in 1961 that Duncan Black was going to be Black &amp; Decker? We also had other greats that raced over there. Probably people have heard of Roger Penske. If everyone's seen a Penske truck running around, well, he owns that. Plus, a lot of other, happened to be in his shop last weekend in Charlotte. The races brought participants and fans from all over the world. If you look at our website, nationalroadautosportsandnationalroadrally.com, and look at our website, you'll see the comments and the photographs from 1953 to 71, when Ferrari and Italian race companies sent their racers to Allegheny County to either race at the airport, or to race a breakneck road hill climb, to get points to be able to race at Indianapolis. These are the things that we had here, and actually, with cooperation, we could bring some of that back. And we tried to do that 11 years ago, whenever we started autocross. Autocross was the beginning. We've also had other peoples, Roger Penske, Carroll Shelby, Paul Newman, and others raced at the airport. Donna Mae Memms, who passed away just a few years ago, came back. She was one of the first female racers in sports car racing, and she won a national championship here in Cumberland. She was also the executive secretary for Don Yenko, Don Yenko Chevrolet. And if people know about cars and watch Barrett-Jackson, they'll know that the Yenko cars are the ones that bring the big money. But these are folks that we had contact with. We've had, also, we had a contact at the airport during our autocross, who is an executive with General Motors. She was involved with Cadillac Motor Division. She went on to be the marketing director for the C6 Corvette racing team. These are people that we had emails, and we talked to on a regular basis, and were coming to Cumberland just to have fun. Because of revenue generated from autocross, National Road Autosports has been able to sponsor the Polish Mountain Hill Climb in Flintstone, with all the proceeds benefiting the Flintstone Volunteer Fire Department. We've brought the Great Race twice to downtown Cumberland. That cost us $5,000 bucks for that. We also sponsored the B-25 Fly-In from the Mid-Atlantic Air Museum. Our six autocross events per year generates approximately $125,000 per year to the local economy. In over 10 years, the events have generated over $1 million in direct spending and $3 million in economic impact. We've held over 60 weekend events that bring out-of-town guests to our community. And I guess the buzzword today is it puts heads in beds. And that's what we've done, and we try to do with those weekend events, and sometimes we even have invitationals for Friday nights, so that we can get them here for two nights in the motels. Through our annual charity auctions, we have made contributions to the Youth Aviation Fund at the Community Trust Foundation. In addition, we've contributed to the Allegheny Animal Shelter, the Mineral County United Way, and the Allegheny County Historical Society. And what we're asking for is basically this. We're asking you to draft a letter of support to be sent to the PHAA, so that we may proceed with a plan and an application to the FAA for a 2015 autocross season. And what we're looking for is just cooperation and your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I understand that Mr. Kenny Wilmot is here. Mr. Wilmot came last week and had talked about Troop Community Event, and he talked with me about some things, and he's got a neat story to tell.
Good evening. I'm Kenneth Wilmot, live at 513 Ford Avenue. I spent the best 20 years of my life working on airplanes in the Air Force. Two and a half years was working on helicopters. That day at time was known as Cape Canaveral. I was the only engine man at what we call was Air Sea Rescue Det 9, and stationed at Patrick Air Force Base. Anyway, we had eight CHs, three Cs. We were Air Force Air Sea Rescue. Our primary mission was Air Sea Rescue and support of the Cape. We supplied all the tracking sites down in South America. Anyway, I had the pleasure, last Wednesday, of looking at a beautiful airplane. What really amazed me was it didn't have a single rivet on it. The aircraft I worked on wouldn't even fit in that hangar that you, that one, fit in. It was a 26-man job, laying along the water, Air Sea Rescue. Anyway, this is a beautiful airplane. And what a lot of people don't realize or comprehend, they watch a helicopter fly, or they hear it at nighttime, and they read where it's rescued. People hear it rescued. They don't realize, not everybody can fly a helicopter. It takes a lot, a lot of skill. People, mostly, I think everyone with pilots over there came out of militaries. It wasn't, anyway, you have to complete flight school. Flight school's not easy. And if you want to fly helicopters, that's another name of the ballgame. You really have to have the aptitude, the backbone, and mentality to fly one, because it takes two people to fly that two-engine job over there. It has two engines. Each engine has 1,800 horsepower, has 3,600 horsepower. That's about 600 more than what we had in our aircraft, and our aircraft could hold 26 men. But anyway, I think people just need to know that the people up there flying that thing, they deserve every penny they got paid, and they work long hours. You might say, well, he only flies maybe once or twice a week or rescue, but that's not true. Every day is a training day. Every day, their training, mostly, what they practice every day to make it routine is what they call auto-geration. That's a maneuver that, if you're flying along and you lose power, your engine quits. When they get to a certain position, close to the ground, they pull up on the collective, and that puts all that power into your props, and it just cushions you, you just sit right down like on a marshmallow. But anyway, these people are really, really good. I talked to the, I think it's the head pilot there with Mr. Dyson. We had a lot of discussion. He was in the Air Force. He flew the same model aircraft that I worked on, but even then, things had really changed. You might say, this, the helicopter that we got now for the state police, you would say it's a Maserati compared to the aircraft I worked on was a Model A40. It was, actually. It took a lot of work and maintenance to keep them up. But this one has everything is electronic. You got any problems with the engine, it's got a computer there that tells you what's wrong. In the olden days, we didn't have none of that. And I spent about 15 minutes in the cockpit, but how he can keep track of all that stuff, I don't know. But in the olden days, we didn't have much of that. But a lot of people don't know how to fly a helicopter. There's one pilot, he flies it, then the second pilot, he runs the engines. He takes care of the engines. But in a regular jet airplane, you're flying along, you've got your stick, you've got your feet, then your left hand's controlling the throttle, the power input. But on a helicopter, if you want to fly that hang by yourself, you'd have to have about two extra arms. One to fly, run the engines, the other one for the collective. But that's the collective is what they pull up and down, which changes the picture on your prop. But anyway, a lot of people, you know, I just want everybody to know that we've got some really good pilots over there. I talked to several of them. And then, on the other hand, their support crew, they're great. Your medics, they got the same thing. They train every day. There's no slack. There's no goofing off, because you can't goof off in an aircraft, because it'll eat you up. The same when you're right in action. But anyway, I'll tell you how good some of the pilots we had in the Air Force. I'll just relate one incident. At about 200 miles out, off the coast of Florida, was a freighter had an accident. The guy got his leg crushed or something, and they called for us to go pick him up. So anyway, you get out there, pilot's out there, medic, I knew the medic on board, two of them, and he said, we had 40-foot swells. The ship was seesawing and rocking back and forth, all at the same time. He said, our pilot, he put the basket right on the deck. He said, it never moved from the deck. He said, to you, you got, your helicopter pilots have really got to be good. They're just not the run-of-the-mill. They take off from flying school, or Embry-Riddle Flying School, and put it in a helicopter. It don't work.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm sad I didn't make the event, but I know Commissioner Valentine was there, and I appreciate you sharing that.
Oh, and another thing that I've been thinking about, this would be an excellent opportunity. I was kind of disappointed. I looked around, and I didn't see no, you know.
Children?
Children.
Schoolchildren?
The little ones, but no schoolkids.
Okay.
I think it'd be nice, like, say, maybe once every three months, that the state police, same place, same deal, especially for our high school kids, come over and look that thing over, and try to entice them, you know, hey, say, look, this is better than, you know, texting on your whatever. Hey, say, look at this pretty airplane. Would you like to fly it? And talk to the pilots. We need to inspire our young people to set their goals a little bit higher than the standard. They do it. I think they would really enjoy it, and I don't know whether they're allowed to take people for a ride, but I've rode in many helicopters, and it's not a good feeling. The small one might be okay. I never rode in the small one. But I have flown in the big ones, and the thing, it feels like it's going to fly apart in every which way you go, and it's just like this, you know? But anyway, I would, I think it'd be a good idea if we could get our schoolkids up there, maybe every three months or four months, you know.
Well, I'll go ahead and share that, and I appreciate that, sir. Hey, thank you again, sir.
As an end, while I was up there at the airport, I didn't see a single airplane coming and going, and I don't see no reason why they can't have autocross up there. They had them before. I think there's only three scheduled flights in there a day, a mail plane. So they, it's no big thing. They could, you know, just schedule them out for a day.
Okay. All right. Next is Mr. Mike Wade.
Mr. Wilmot, for the last five years, the Allegheny County and Mineral County Crime Solvers has met with Sears every year. Let's see, this is October, September. They have a safety program up there, and they have brought that state police helicopter there every year on a Saturday, and they had a lot of kids up there. So you have a good point. Okay. I appreciate you giving me the time to address you and give you my views on this topic. The last five or six months, oh, I'm sorry. It's Mike Wade, 57 South Broadway, Frostburg. Last five or six months, the Cumberland Airport, which is located in Mineral County, West Virginia, has been in the news. It's incredible timing with Mr. Harbaugh being here. And I agree, I support the races. A lot of the issues I'm not going to talk about, but I would like to address one item, or a couple items, I guess. About 10 years ago, I was sitting in the back of this room. There were other three commissioners at that time. And I was trying to get up to speed on the issues, and I was asking myself how I would vote on these issues that you all are faced with every day. And that day, a man got up, I don't remember his name, but I do know he was in charge of the airport. His opening remark was, I know the airport hasn't made any money in the last 10 years, but I still need the $250,000 to keep the Allegheny County Airport open. I'm sorry, the Cumberland Airport open. So I'm back there, and I'm saying, I wouldn't give him the money. He hasn't made any revenue in 10 years. He got the money. Now, that was 10 years ago. It's now 10 years later, and the newspapers talk about all this controversy over the airport. It hasn't made money in 20 years. At $250,000, that comes to $5 million. We, the taxpayers of Allegheny County, have invested in that airport, and it's still not making a profit, other than the races. But from an airline point of view, it is not. And I realize this didn't happen on your watch. I also realize this is not something you're going to be able to fix overnight, due to the fact that the federal government's got their fingers in this pie. But as a taxpayer, I'm asking that we stop wasting our money on this airport. I hope the newspapers will pick up what I'm saying and get the word out to the public, so you three commissioners can get some input from the public, so they feel the same way I do. Is it okay to waste $250,000 a year on something that's not making any return for us? In my opinion, gentlemen, you have done an excellent job at listening to the public. To the best of my knowledge, you've kept your campaign promises. You have cut spending. You have improved the job market in the county. You have lowered taxes. But most importantly, you have made yourself accessible to the public. I hope you will pursue getting rid of this white elephant we call the airport. I understand in talking to you, we own it. Here might be an opportunity for us to get rid of it. Sell it and try to recoup some of the money that we taxpayers have already invested in You've had to make some really hard decisions since you have been in office, and I have supported all of them. And I will not lose you as my friends if you don't support me on this one. But as a taxpayer, I just wanted to share with you, I hear it. We are pouring money into something that doesn't bring any returns for us. I'm not in favor of throwing my money away, and I know you guys aren't either, but sometimes we get into a stigma with government. You know, just keep pouring money in, eventually it'll fix itself. I don't believe that'll be the case here. So we need to break this paradigm, cut our losses, and move our money back to Allegheny County. Thank you for the opportunity to share my views, and I hope the reporters will investigate the issue and make the public more aware of where our dollars are going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'd like to remind everyone of our next public business meeting, which is Thursday, November the 13th, 2014, 5:00 right here in Room 100. Please see all of the news release concerning the compost site fall schedule, as well as the general election day Allegheny County government schedule, the Berryville Sunnyside Water Project public meeting, and of course, the Debonair Endowment. Water Project public meeting, and of course, the debonair and dashing Mr. Matt Diaz with his CECD recertification news release. I'd like to thank everyone for participating in your government and we hope you have a nice evening. Thank you.